United States of America into the republic from which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Morning Lance. Uh, before I ask for approval of the agenda Renee cannot attend, she does have a doctor's appointment. She gets it to tend to and she said it was okay to talk about that, so. Um, from Eric and ask for approval of today's agenda.
Lance said make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Harry Nono, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries next is approval of minutes.
Lance said make a motion to approve the minutes dated October eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Harry Nono, favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries now I have claims.
Lance said make a motion to approve the claims for payment dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Harry Nono, favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Now I have his consideration approved establishing an application window for board appointed. Boards and commissions.
So, uh, Anne has gone through the list and updated it to the best of her abilities and. Uh, Bree, I'll get a copy. There's a couple of notes I have to make on this and I'll get, uh. Uh, Elaine, you and Bree a copy with a couple of notes on it. So you know what's open, what we appoint, what is appointed by other entities. So. Um, but I, do you want a motion or do you just want?
I, I want to set a time to take advocate, to receive applications.
So, uh, there will be a list that I'll provide to our local media and then there will be a list of vacancies. Uh, in the auditor's office for review, but with the timing and everything. I would like to suggest an application deadline of November fourteenth at the close of business.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'd make a motion to accept. Applications for boards and commissions. Uh, it till the close of business on November fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. It's, it'll also be online too as well, correct?
As soon as I get the official like thing put together that I'd like to get so it looks a little bit more appropriate.
Yeah, okay. And I'll work on these notes for you too, Anne.
That'd be great.
All right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Next is consideration approved nationwide sponsored plan and authorized permission for Chandra Kite to complete the Daki sign form online.
Lance, I would make a motion to approve and authorize Chandra Kite to complete the Daki sign form for the nationwide sponsored plan.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Now I have his utility permit.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the utility permit for Unity. Uh, Stephen Ness is the applicant. This is placing fiber between the case. At Northwest Corner of Bee Avenue and two fiftieth street.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries now I have the VA quarterly report.
Lance said make a motion to acknowledge the VA quarterly report.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries, we have no change of statuses and other business, I'm going to swap these two around, could do IFADC first. If you're fine with that, if you guys are fine with that.
Sure.
Yeah, come on up.
All right.
Good morning everyone. Um, so I just could get an update, what's been going on the last couple of months? Um, I did receive a inquiry from a real estate transaction firm from Seattle that was interested in our certified site. For the purpose of building a data center. Um, their requested power needs were for three hundred megawatts plus. So I did respond with the capabilities of a line in Midland, but I haven't heard back from them because we can't come close to providing that kind of power. I did receive an, a request for information from the Iowa Economic Development Authority on an international company that manufactures. Plastic packaging, uh, materials for the food industry. Uh, they have one facility on the east coast and are now looking to establish another manufacturing plant in Midwest. I did. Respond to this inquiry, they are looking at a pretty broad swipe to Iowa, Nebraska and Missouri. Uh, I have been contacted by a company located in California, which is owned by an Iowa Falls native. He wants to bring. His business back to Iowa, so he's looking for some incentives to help with the move. Um. I've met with Troy Shane of Shane's Collision and Auto Body. He's making plans. To build a new building on his location and I've talked with him about potential assistance from the IFADC. Revolving loan fund and city revolving loan fund. And I've also referred him to the Small Business Development Center for same assistance there. Wow, I've met with a couple of housing developers about opportunities in Iowa Falls. Uh, the Princess Grill and Pizzeria Project has begun with work on the roof and gutting of the second floor. So again, just to recap, this project will create two new two bedroom apartments in the second floor for low to moderate income. And make repairs to the west wall and the facade and the front facade. So this is really, it's a huge investment into a really iconic building in downtown Iowa Falls. Uh, the Iowa Falls Housing Committee continues to meet and we determined that new housing incentives. And some low moderate income housing options are two areas that we want to focus on and continue to explore. Um, I've been continuing to conduct my business visits. As part of this year's round of business retention expansion visits, so. Over the course of the last three months, I visited with Mort's Plumbing and Heating. Willable One Nimrod Meats, Fairway, Plastic Recycling, Ringer Materials, Vanwall Pinnacle, Walmart. Natural Recycle Protein, uh, River Valley Pipe, Cargill, Dale Howard, Seaboard Foods, Dairy Queen and Hy-Vee. Um, Jones Furniture and Mattress has opened a new store. In the River Hills Mall just south of the Hy-Vee location. And Adam's Home Furniture has opened for business on Washington Avenue in Iowa Falls. Uh. We have secured a right of first refusal from a landowner. To purchase land for a new industrial park in Iowa Falls, so we've been working on that for some time. We did conduct a service industry survey among the local businesses, determine what business services people are going out of town to obtain. IT services, financial services, legal services were the top three. And so I've had a conversation with a couple of different IT companies. It really doesn't seem to be an opportunity there because that industry has changed drastically. They don't really have brick and mortar stores anymore. Everything is, is, uh, done on site and with mobile monitoring, so. Uh, but I have talked to a couple of accountants. Who both tell me they plan to open offices in Iowa Falls for at least a couple of days a week, so that's, um. That's good. Uh, and I am going to be attending a meeting of attorneys this month. To discuss ways to get more legal practitioners in rural areas. And we have two new spec homes under construction in the Heritage Edition being built by Scenic Healthcare. So that's what I've got.
Oh yeah, thank you.
Mark, can, after the meeting, can you lend me ten minutes?
Um, I might have five, I do have a ten thirty.
Okay, I'll make it quick, thank you.
All right, next I have Summit Carbon Solution update. Thank you, appreciate you giving us the meeting on the agenda.
I'll get this one to Renee.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's JD Myers, I'm the Ag and Stakeholder Relations for Summit Carbon. Um. We just want to stop by and give a, give an update on what's going on with the project and some of the changes that we made. Uh, the first one there in the handout is, is we've got a new leadership team. So this summer. Um, we had a change on the upper management and new leadership team. Uh, Joe Griffin is the CEO, uh. Mike Higgins is the COO and it's not just those two people, it's, it's a whole team. Um, that's came in and taken over the upper management. Um, these guys have, have done multiple projects together as a team. Uh, all across the United States, uh, with all sorts of different product, so they've transported in their, in their lines that they've done. Um, we have asked for, uh, some amendments to the Route One permit, uh, or Phase One permit that we, that we had on hand. Uh, one of those is increasing pipe size, um. In Western Iowa going up to Nebraska and then asking them to take, uh, the South Dakota requirement off that we get a permit in South Dakota. Uh, that way it gives us more options on which ways we can go with the CO2. Um, we'll, we offer or we, we like to encourage open dialogue, so if you would like to meet with Joe Griffin, the new CEO, um, just let us know. I've got Kylie Lang's. Email address in the, in the flyer there, contact them. If you guys have any other questions, we want to meet with manager team, we're happy to do so. Um, we've also got some meetings coming up, open house meetings open to the public, uh, that I'll go through here in a little bit. Vision, uh, mission and values, um, biggest thing I can say on that is that, that we embrace our local agricultural roots. Uh, this is a project that, uh, starts here in Iowa. Starts, um, at ethanol plants with products that we manufacture today, uh, and using corn, uh, that we raise. I farm up in Humble County. Uh, and I can tell you that's, that's the reason I'm involved with this project is, is we have to keep our domestic use of corn and products that we raise here strong. Um, especially in, in environments like we have today, um. So the more we can use, uh, the more we can increase, uh, the value of that ethanol, uh, the more those plants will grow and, and. And, uh, use more corn. Um, our landowner. And community partnership program, so this is one of the changes that we made, um, easement options and annual payments. I was talking with Kathy before the meeting. Uh, one of the things that we changed is we heard from a lot of landowners that said, you know, we've got a windmill, we get a royalty payment every year for that or. You know, we want to be treated like an investor and, uh, if you guys get a return, we want a return. So we made that an option and if they want to, um, basically come alongside the, the owners investors. Uh, they can get a return just like they are on their, on their easement for their ground. Uh, we still offer a cash easement, uh, cash payment on the easements. Um, and then we did add a annual per foot payment, uh, for that landowner going across, uh, their ground. Survey and construction commitment, uh, landowners can receive a minimum of seventy-two hours, uh, notification for survey work. Will pay a one-time payment of five hundred dollars, um, to walk across their ground and take a survey just to, uh, you know, deem that it's, it's constructible across their ground. And then we're going to follow Ag Pipeline Industry Best Practices on Construction and Restoration. There is a document, it's called the AIMP Ag Impact Mitigation Plan that's filed with the state. Uh, very detailed goes through how we fix tile, goes through, you know, how we reclaim that soil, how we pick up rocks, you know, all these little details. Um, that, that gets spelled out at that. Emergency responder preparedness, um, we have, we've had this in place for a while, so fifty thousand dollar per grant per county. Um, and then a thousand dollars per mile pipeline. So if, if you turn back a few pages, I, I did include a map, um, of Harden County and then there's nearly sixty miles. Of pipeline that are posed, so you would get a hundred and ten thousand, you know, nearly a hundred and ten thousand dollar grant. For that, um, emergency responder preparedness and then we'll fund CO2 specific response equipment. So if they need a CO2 sensor. Um, something like that for the, for the, the fire departments will do that. Um, implement real time notification system for the residents and then ongoing coordination and annual exercises with first responders. So. We know, you know, these are all volunteer departments out here in the country, uh, you get turnover. We'll come every year and do training, uh, for the pipeline. If you have a big turnover and you want us to come in, you know, three months later, uh, we'll, we'll be happy to do that too. Community partnership, uh, we have annual county grants based on pipeline footage being built in county. Um, it increases milestones with easements, uh, agreements are reached within a county and those funds can be used on whatever you want, so. Um, when that payment comes, if you want to use it for your emergency responders or if you have another project in the community that would benefit from it, you can use it however you want. And then the last thing on there is, is the property taxes and I've included an updated property tax sheet in there. Um, it's almost three point three million. Uh, property taxes we pay a year, one point four of that goes to your schools. Uh, two hundred thousand goes to community college, three hundred seventy-seven goes to your townships. And then one point, little over one point two, uh, million goes to. Uh, your general fund, so how will you guys see fit to spend that? The meeting dates that we have, uh, in November, um, we've got one in Iowa Falls on November twelfth. Uh, from five to seven, it's open to the public. If, if you want to come ask questions one-on-one, we'll be there, the management team will be there. We'll be happy to answer, uh, whatever questions you may have. If you can't make it to Iowa Falls, uh, that evening, there is, I know, so it's an hour drive up to Waverly. Uh, from here, but there is one at eleven to one, yeah, Waverly and then the next day eleven to one in Fort Dodge also, so. Um, if you can make there, we'd, we'd be happy to talk to you.
Good, any, any questions?
I don't have anything.
Do you want to take any comments from public?
I can, or if they want to come to those meetings and, and have some one-on-one time, I'd be happy to do that too.
Well, we got a few people here, let's go ahead and ask if they want to get free, that's fun.
What are your Iowa Falls?
Uh, all breaks off. Anybody else? Robert?
During, um, Friday's federal district court meetings, the hearings that, that we had. It was evident. In the arguments and in Brett Kublinski's comments that Summit cannot meet the conditions. Set forth. For phase one by the Iowa Utility Board, like that is called Iowa Utility Board. So, um, you've reached roadblocks in South Dakota. And so now, as of September fifteenth, Summit at the eleventh hour has those conditional permits, excuse me. Those amendments put in there. And a few days later, a week later, now they want the consolidation of. All laterals to be included in the original. Project. Summit. Could go through South Dakota if they wanted to because they're not ruling the pipeline out. They're just saying you need voluntary easements. Summit has. Has declined to file a permit with. The South Dakota Utility Board, whatever they're called, PUC. And now, and now you guys want to change everything up again. And still ram this down. Ruin this project through. I'm going to ask you. For phase one, what was your voluntary easement percentage?
Believe it's over seventy-five percent, but I'm not, I can't, don't quote me on that because I don't have.
Though I got recently, you know, seventy to seventy-four from you guys. Okay, so for phase two in Harden County. What is your voluntary easement?
I'm not sure, I can't answer, I don't have that.
You're not sure?
But I would ask you to come to that meeting, we can have that information, be able to look up that information, uh, in November, just come one-on-one, we'll talk with you about it. And you can go and take it.
I, I very much doubt that. I was one of those that got a cease and desist order from Summit for speaking truth. Truth about this project. You guys want to combine these two. Together. So you can see more accurate favorable numbers linked towards you. It won't be seventy. But in Webster County, you told them you had twenty percent voluntary easements. People are waking up to this entire scam. You guys say you honor.
Let's, let's choose a word on scam there.
Okay. Um, my apologies for throwing that word. You guys say you honor federal law as far as pipelines are concerned, you're following state law. You, you're following county ordinances and yet like. And, and, and all that, but yet. You fight the counties like Shelby County and Story County when it comes to setbacks. Setbacks that they have the authority. To set and that case is on its way to the Supreme Court.
So I would say, I'm not an attorney, I can't answer these questions, why have I left the court, you know, so, so it out. I mean, they can look at the law, so you can decide, you know, what, what was accurate or not. And as passionate as you are against this project, Robert, I can tell you that I am just the opposite. I'm as passionate for it because I see the need that we have to do to strengthen our ag economy and keep the ag strong, keep, keep the ethanol plant strong. I mean, I've got family and friends that work at ethanol plants. And family and friends that deliver corn to ethanol plants, so, you know, we've got to keep this strong. We can't, we can't miss an opportunity like this. Um, here in Iowa, I mean.
I agree with you, we have to protect the ethanol business and, and the, and the farmers that deal in grain sold to ethanol.
Yep.
But the carbon intensity score and the carbon put footprint. And, and this voodoo math about lowering carbon intensity score on ethanol. Or grain.
Again, I have to disagree with you because that, that's all numbers. I mean, it's all chemistry and science. It, it's fairly straightforward on, on how that's figured. Um, I do appreciate your passion and, and your, your investment that you've made at the project, following us around and, and speaking out, I think it's great. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm just the opposite. I think, I think it's something we have to have and we need to push for it.
But you're not.
Yeah, I do.
Any other question?
Yeah. So in your original docket, you filed that it would be used for sequestration. Um, we were supposed to have the district court hearing last Friday. On our lawsuit against the IUC and their decision, but Summit has remanded that. Trying to open up the docket again because you can't get through South Dakota and actually you can't use North Dakota either. Because the North Dakota, the Minnesota pipeline permit runs into North Dakota's pipeline and North Dakota's runs into South Dakota before going back up to. North Dakota, so you can't get through any of those states right now. So in your new docket, you filed that it could be used for sequestration or utilization.
Yep.
Exactly what kind of utilization? And if you use it, does that not defeat your carbon intensity score?
It depends on how it's used, um, but I, I would say, uh, just like economic development, I mean, we've had a bunch of companies contact us. About citing alongside the pipeline, they want an, in a, in. Uninterruptible source of CO2, so instead of placing, uh, something right by one ethanol plant that could potentially be shut down. Uh, they want a source that, that's on a, a pipeline network where they'll have uninterrupted, uh, CO2 access. Uh, you know, some of those are, are manufacturing, um, different kind of products and, and if that CO2 is truly squashed within a product, then, then it would count towards sequestration.
But then it has completely changed. What your permit was granted for, your permit was granted for sequestration in North Dakota.
I think that's why they're asking for amendment maybe because, you know, as time goes forward, um, there's new uses that can be found, new industries, new innovations and things. And if we want to have access to that and the ability to do it, build new factories, um, in rural America, I think it's a great opportunity. And the other things like data centers, um, you know, one of the things with data centers, so they'll talk about putting. Um, turbines, um, to generate electricity there. They can capture the CO2 off those turbines, um, they could put that in our pipeline too. Uh, and, and reduce the CO, CI score of those data centers and there's other, there's other factories. I think that's why they, I think that's why they asked for the, the amendment and if we're still, still be transformed for the CO2.
So you keep the landowners in limbo, not knowing what's happening.
I think.
Yeah.
As the pipeline size increased.
No.
Although I did notice in our easement that we were told an eight, but in our easement it says up to a ten.
Yeah, and that's common. Every, every one of these ones out there have a, have an upsize, um, in, in the easement, but what we're planning for is, is the, what we've told you.
One thing you didn't talk about is the water usage.
Yep.
How many gallons of water will this require? I think this is important to our economic development person, especially like with the Poet plant. Right there. Of how much more water that ethanol plant will need. I know when. At Pine Lake, they had seven wells and just had to drill an eight well. And go down to a deeper aquifer. I think the Poet plant has two permits and then I believe they use Harden, Iowa Falls water in the summertime too. So how much more water are you going to use, which would affect our industrial development?
Yeah, in general terms in Iowa, uh, ethanol production uses one percent of the permitted water in Iowa. Our project would raise that usage at a plant about, we, we would use about nine percent of, of what the plants use today. So it would go from one percent to like one point oh nine or one point one percent of the water you, permitted water you use in the state of Iowa. So it's not, if you look at it globally, it's not, it's not a huge increase. Now we're taking a look at it, doing other things, um, trying to use more closed loops, trying to use some fans and air cooling on those compressors. Uh, one of the big miscon, misconceptions out there is, is that the water is actually being used to. Somehow dilute the CO2 or in the pipeline to help transport it, it's not, we're dehydrating the CO2, so there, there's, there's no water in the CO2. Uh, the water is used to cool compressors at, at the pump stations and that's, it's a cooling factor, so.
When you're using those other kinds of things, then you're using more electrical power, right?
I think any kind of economic development, no matter what, you know, who's going to use electric power. Unless, unless you're going to, you know, have a solar and wind generators to, to offset it. I think, I mean, any kind of development is going to have electrical usage.
Were, were there any other questions?
All right, again, I encourage everybody to come, uh, you know. In November to that meeting, we'll have a ton of information, one-on-one, we can walk through there, uh, and answer any questions, yeah.
Are you going to be available if anybody has any questions in the back?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm happy to stick around, you bet.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thanks for the time.
You bet, thank you. Um, any other business?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, we had an email about the EMS Essential Services. Uh, Advisory Board and that progress, so. My preference, and I did mention this to Attorney Myers, with the city school elections, not that the school boards will have anybody representing, but. There will likely be a change of mayors. So some of those appointments, uh, may be off or not, so my request, Lance, uh, as the chair is to. Hold off until the city elections are, are certified and, uh, then we move forward on that.
So when you say certified, you just want to wait till mid-November?
Correct, after we certify the election.
Okay. Um, any other comment or other business? Hearing none, public comments?
I think you said some of it, I probably would.
So the landowner who is doubly affected by this Summit Carbon Pipeline. I have been working at this for four years, doing my research. Um. And I think the reason that we're here today. We shouldn't have to be here today. Because Summit has definitely proved that they cannot meet the needs of the original pipeline permit. They can't get through South Dakota. And that is one of the biggest hurdles. So they continue to change. The rules. I remember at the first meeting that we had in Des Moines. That Summit said you can't change the rules in the middle of the game. Well, it appears to me Summit is changing the rules at the end of the game. And it reminds me of playing a game with my grandson. Then you play this game. And then he starts changing the rules because he wants to win. I mean, he's six years old, you don't expect that from a six-year-old. But for a company to come in and do that, it's not the same when it affects the lives. Of many farmers, landowners and communities. Because one thing that JD did not mention, he, he talked about safety. In just that they would supply all these. Um, the money for grants. But when you can consider the safety of communities. No value could be put on that. When they filed in their last docket. I went on the GPS and with their KMC. And I made some maps. Like with the Poet plant in Iowa Falls. When FMSMA came out, they stated that they somewhat should have to notify everyone within a two-mile radius. So I went to see how much of Iowa Falls would be affected by this two-mile radius. Within the one-mile radius is our hospital. Our emergency management and all of our industrial parks and several businesses, including Walmart. Within it and some of our public schools in the downtown. And the two-mile radius is the whole town of Iowa Falls. That is a concern to me as a citizen of Iowa Falls and of Iowa. Of the safety of the people in our community. When Red Brown came through. I decided I would look and see exactly they were going out D fifteen. So I had the map of Iowa Falls and so I went on D fifteen where it crosses twice. So I made the two mile circles going between Iowa Falls and Actley. Look at how, you probably can't see it, but how much of it, if there was a leak. How much of Harden County, County would be affected? Red by Ryder saw this and thought, I don't want to come. Ragby Rider saw this and thought, I don't want to come on this route. That will affect our economic development too. I think we've talked about the water usage. The electric use. Um, they've talked about their new partnerships. Well, we got our. Easement notification yesterday, a new one. And they were talking about the part where. If you want to take a percentage of it. But let's, let's, they, they give the formula. And it, and in here it says. Landowner acknowledges that there may be no payments of easement consideration. After the initial payment, then agrees that the limited initial payment is sufficient consideration for the easement agreement. Including the damages referenced in the easement agreement, this payment agreement and any other agreements between landowner. But above that, it says, and the formula in section one B results in a negative number or zero, no payment would may be made to the landowner. Your original payment is ten dollars. So if they don't make money, you get nothing, and you have a dangerous pipeline on your land. When I testified at the IUB, I mentioned how they were going through my highly erodible land. And the danger of it, just like it would be in Satasha. Well, last year, we had a heavy rain. And guess what happened to that highly erodible land? It washed down through the whole field and washed out part of the road. And the county had to come and put a new culvert in. That next Satasha may be on my farm. That's why I'm here today, and why I've been fighting for four years and starting my fifth year, of protecting my private property rights. This is a, a, a for-profit company. It is not a utility at this time, if they refiled their permit, they might maybe become. A utility or a. A common carrier if they find other uproads, but as of right now, they are not. And so that's why. We are fighting for our property rights. If you look at the lateral tunes, Robert asked about it. I'm afraid to say Harden County has the one, one of the highest signs because they bought all the navigator easements. Without the navigator easements. They would only have about five or six easements, and you have to remember that Anna Sweeney and Bruce Rastetter. Both live in Harden County, have it going through their land. I only know of really one landowner who has actually signed. If you look at all fourteen dockets, there is less than fifteen percent. Of the, like fifteen hundred landowners who have signed easements. People do not want this pipeline. And I asked my board of supervisors, will you file a petition to intervene like you did in Phase One? And have you signed on with Shelby County in their lawsuit? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Robert?
I yield my.
Any others? Alright. From there, I could ask for German.
Lance, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I will second, it's been moving seconded in discussion. Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, adjourn, thank you.